This is the Mike LaPetry Show. Nassau County property taxes are way too high. That's why you need Reassessment and Evaluation Services, Inc., the number one tax grievance provider that offers personal service and high success rates. Grieve your taxes now before the deadline on March 1st, 2024. Call today for more info, 516-742-5180, or apply online at reassessmytaxes.com. Ladies and gentlemen, we have here Bob Vecchio, Executive Director of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association, in the studio on the Mike LaPetry Show. What's up, Bobby?
We're in the house. We're doing well, Mike. Thanks for having me.
I was so excited to have a real talk, real conversation, all about a various amount of topics, specifically focusing on the mental health crisis facing students, the future of state aid funding for schools. And then I want to talk about this article that came out in Newsday. It said, "An Analysis: Long Island's Annual School Spending Hits Record $36,105." per student, which to me is like a crazy number. And I really want to tell, talk to you about that, break it all down. But for those who don't know, the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association is a service organization with a membership of 109 Long Island school boards that you represent, oversee, all across Nassau and Suffolk County, which is tremendous. And that must be a hell of a feat for you, just to be able to coordinate, communicate, and everyone being on the same page. How do you do it?
It's never a dull day in the, in the big city, as I would say, in of the 109 school boards. That represents about 94 and a half percent of the students on Long Island. So we cover a wide region and, you know, Nassau and Suffolk County, the school communities. A lot of similarities, but there's also a lot of unique differences that make Long Island great. So you try to keep a regional perspective as to the priorities with regards to public education. And look, we're, we're very fortunate, very blessed here on Long Island that public education on the whole is very, very good. As recently recognized by the same Newsday article that came out recently that shows some of the best schools in the country, not even the state. Some of the best schools in the country are here on Long Island. That is nothing new. There's been a high quality of public education that has been sustained on Long Island for a long period of time. And we'll get into some of the cost factors, but you know.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. That's what people love, right? You come here to Long Island because you want to create, raise a family, you want to have a great home, great community, safe community, a place that's opportunity abound, where you can work, develop a career. And most importantly is you can reassure yourself that the children, your children are learning in an environment that stimulates their brains, that creates the next generation of thinkers, innovators, and entrepreneurs.
When people look to buy a house, you know, right after they ask how much, it's usually the next question is what school district does this housing belong in? So it's, it's a big issue. And like I said, the vast majority of our schools are really good, high quality. And we do have challenges here on the island, you know? Demographics and our socioeconomics have changed dramatically over the last 10 years. We're dealing with issues in public education that has not been seen ever before, you know, even before the pandemic. The mental health issues, the mental wellness of the students was getting worse, you know? We saw an increase in suicide attempts and suicides among primary grade level students. It increased like 140% nationwide over an eight-year period. And think about that, primary grade students, you're talking K through five, right? Or K through six. To see students' mental wellness take a steep decline, and then the pandemic just exacerbated that, the isolation. And schools are still trying to deal with that. And that's going to be a decades-long problem. So, you know, good, high-quality public education for a long period of time, new challenges post-pandemic that schools have to deal with, in addition to the learning loss that every student and every school.
And let me understand this, just with your focus on representation. You're the school board, so is that, where is your allegiance per se? Is it, is it this, is it the school itself, administration? Is it the, the school board which represents the community elects the school boards, right? So is it the community then and their children? How does, which one, where is that?
So my organization helps support school board members across Long Island with trainings, advocacy at the federal and state level especially, and also the regional level. There's regional issues that come up. For example, LIPA wanting to become a fully public power.
Yes.
Well, why does that impact schools? Well, PSENG pays millions of dollars in pilot payments, payments in lieu of taxes to schools. So what is going to happen with all that revenue that schools get currently from PSENG if it becomes a state public power authority, not the hybrid model that it is? So we were advocating to make sure that the legacy of those payments are preserved so that it doesn't pass on additional burden or additional costs to the local taxpayers. So we represent school boards and I, you know, assist with trainings and workshops, get them in front of other state leaders. We had an event last year that Dr. Betty Rosa came down to Long Island to address our school boards on a variety of issues. The state controller, Tom DiNapoli, came to another event that we had to talk about, school finances and school fiscal governance. So those are the things that we do to help.
Which is excellent, because you're educating the school boards to making sure they are running, they're representing the community in the best way possible for their school district.
Right, because they're the local governing authority for the local elected boards of education. No single board member has any greater authority. It's only when you have the quorum of the board, the board authority, that governs the local district. And they work in close concert with the superintendent of schools and the district administration. And every school board member, I spent 18 years as a school board member, 15 as board president at the William Floyd School District. And that's how my journey got me to where I am today. But as a school board member, you know, we run, we get elected, and it's an unpaid volunteer position. A lot of people don't understand.
They definitely don't understand that. And that is incredible to me. That's why all these representatives on these school boards, it is purely out of the goodness of their heart.
It costs us money, you know, because you gotta go to every cupcake sale and all the PTA event, you know? But we do it out of a passion, because most people want to serve, right? I, I got into school board service because I was always taught, leave it better than you found it, give back whenever possible. And I cared deeply and passionately about the public education that kids were going to be getting in my school community. And that's why I served for 18 years and 15 as the board president. And, and it was the most frustrating, annoying, rewarding, best thing I ever did. And that's the best way to describe it.
That's like a confluence of emotions right there.
It really is, because on any given day, any number of things can happen. You know, we just recently experienced the tragedy of the Farmingdale School District with that terrible bus crash. And I got to tell you, I didn't know anybody involved, but as a board member, I've been through our share of tragedies. There is nothing that hits you in the gut harder than when you lose a staff member unexpectedly or tragically like that. I attended more student funerals than I care to even admit as a school board member through one reason or another, doesn't matter. You know, but these are part of the things that you do. And if you care and you can't fake caring, it hurts and, and it touches you deeply. But at the same time, the successes and the accomplishments. I think of the kid that came from a very poor family, six kids. The father was a carpet layer, and this kid was brilliant and got a full ride to MIT and forever changing his life trajectory and the trajectory of his family as well. And that's, that's what is exciting and, and passionate about public education. It could truly change one's life trajectory, right? It could break the cycle of poverty. It could take somebody that is brilliant and bring them to the next level. And you get to celebrate the triumphs and you try to bring all the kids along. So school board service is a really special thing. And the people that serve, you know, we're a little crazy, we're a little insane to do all this and, and to take the public accountability, because it is the most local grassroots democracy that we have, right? People complain about all levels of government, but they show up to school board member meetings and there's only one budget you get to vote on as a voter. And that's a school budget, right? You're a former assemblyman, so you'd appreciate this. Imagine running for reelection alongside the state budget that you are going to present to folks to pay for. That's what school board members do every year.
Crazy.
They run alongside their budgets. They're like, okay, here's what we're presenting as far as cost of public education. And oh, by the way, reelect me. And oh, by the way, I don't get paid. And I really just care about kids, so.
Which is, that's the point, is you have to campaign, get out there, all that. And there is no financial compensation. This is purely out of the goodness of their hearts to say, I'm looking to make my school district the best it can be for, for my children. Or even, I know many friends who don't even have children anymore in the schools, but they're still there just putting that commitment in there because they want to keep saying that school go in the right direction and head doing. It's amazing, I tell you. And I talk to people all the time too, who, and we're going to get into the cost and all that associated later. But I say to them, when they complain about the costs associated with school taxes and whatnot, I say, have you voted in your school elections, school board elections? Have you been present in your school board? Have you been talking to those on the school board? Because it's all important that goes to those costs and understanding where those costs stem from.
Absolutely. And, you know, we have an expression with school board service, right? You never go grocery shopping and get your ice cream because you're never going to get out of the parking lot and the ice cream's going to be melted by the time you get home. Because everybody, once you're on the school board, A, your Facebook friends increase exponentially. You're suddenly the funniest guy in the room. But everybody, you know, hey, do you have a minute? I just want to talk to you about something. Or, hey, can I ask you a question? And that's part of the local service.
And you know what? I, I, I know for a fact, tons of people always get those questions where, hey, I need to talk to you. And hey, I need to just take a minute of your time because I want to talk to you. And what do they want to talk about? Is a lot of times, is their children in their schools, they might be having some issues. And what are those issues regarding about is the mental health. And I really want to get into specifically just that, is the mental health crisis facing students. And you've seen that, for me, I've been seeing that increasing ticking up since the 2000s. Increase, increase. And then dramatically, what happens? This is going to be my opinion now, and you're going to talk to me about the facts. But my opinion is when social media hit, when social media came to the roots within the 2000s, when you had the MySpace come, and then thereafter just blew up with Facebook, and then Instagram just doubled down on it with providing problems. I had President of Family and Children's Association, Dr. Jeff Reynolds, has been excellent on this topic. And I really want to talk to you about this, Bobby, where, where, what are you, what are the school boards seeing as far as boys and girls? I would like to address each of those mutually exclusive because how social media affects, but other, other issues that they're having with the mental health crisis.
Yeah, prior to becoming Executive Director of the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association, I spent 32 years in the drug and alcohol field. I was on the finance end, but, you know, we got to see the issues of addiction up close and personal for many, many years. And you're right, it has been growing since, there's a direct correlation to the onset of social media and some of the issues we're seeing. There's a direct correlation to as connected as we are through the internet and to our tablets and to our phones, there's a disconnect, whether it's parental disconnect, right? Because you're spending more time in the tablet or giving the kid a tablet to stay distracted. It happens, you know, I'm a little bit old school, but not to say that that is all the parents' fault or whatever. But there is a direct correlation with the advent and advance of technology and what we're seeing today. And there's a direct correlation to untreated, undiagnosed mental health issues later on down the road tying into, for a percentage of those folks, into addiction disorders and issues, and you're seeing the overdose deaths skyrocket. We're not really seeing it in the schools, thank God, but you do see it right after they get out of school, just skyrockets and go off the charts. I mean, you're talking, you know, you're 22 to 32-year-olds. It's, it's, we're losing a generation of people and it's a shame. But as far as the issues and how schools are tackling it, some of the increase to cost of education, and we'll get into it, directly ties to schools are hiring counselors and social workers and psychologists at rates that we never saw before. Again, I got on the board in 2003. Our security costs have increased dramatically.
Dramatically, yes.
Dramatically. I would have never thought that we'd have security in our elementary buildings that changed after Sandy Hook. We fenced in our properties, we put out guard booths, we have security personnel that, you know, just grew exponentially after that. Same thing with the mental health crisis that we're dealing with. There's an increase in the need, right? We're not treating the kids, but we're dealing with the issues that manifest themselves in the classrooms or our hallways. And what we have to do better is we have to have a good, warm handoff from the school system to places like Family Children's and Family Service League. Because each system has been in individual silos for way too long. You've had the mental health industry in one silo, the school industry in another, the hospital system in another silo, and the drug and alcohol industry in another silo. And they've never communicated well across the spectrum. So what we're working on with school superintendents, and this is something that I'm very passionate about and I'm, I'm pleased to be a part of, we're getting the community-based providers together with the school officials and say, we can't do it the same way that we've always done it. We need to do it different to do it better. So what do we need to do? How do we better communicate? How do we better refer back and forth? Give you one small example of one of the ideas that came out of these meetings and conversations. There's a program called Handle With Care. And what Handle With Care is, is let's say a police department is called to an address, and we'll keep it simple, it's domestic violence, maybe some drugs involved. And they go into the house and they're dealing with the domestic violence situation. Maybe it was pretty traumatic. And they see school-aged children in the house. What we're advocating to the counties for is then that law enforcement would contact the local school district and just say, 123 Front Street, Handle With Care. Not sharing any information, not violating any confidentiality or whatever. And then the school district would sit there and say, okay, let's see who's at that address. We have three kids that are registered at that address in these different classes, these different grade levels. Clue into the teacher and the building principal and the school counselor saying, hey, look, something happened that might have been a traumatic event for these kids to have witnessed. Just be on your guard. And if something comes up, then we can put the counseling in place and then maybe the outreach to a provider like Family Service League saying, you know, depending on the situation, but something as simple as that, just to give the schools a head up, heads up, because you know what? If, if a kid witnesses a domestic violence situation at home and they come into the classroom and now they're upset, they've been traumatized, maybe they act out in an inappropriate way. And instead of disciplining the student, find out why they're acting out. And, and it's something, a simple program like that, that takes some logistics on the backend, no question. And you got to work out those logistics, but that can deal with some of the issues that our kids are dealing with every day. You know, we have greater food insecurities across Long Island like we've never seen before. And that, that is regardless of zip code. I don't care if you're a wealthy community, non-wealthy community. There's people that are struggling to meet ends meet. So how do we best address the trauma that some of our kids are experiencing for a multitude of reasons? How do we best address some of the mental wellness due to isolation from the pandemic? Due to females wanting to live to a certain image that they know they can't achieve because of social media and if they don't get enough likes, or bullying, right? Bullying back in the day used to be, you, you deal with the guy or the gal in the classroom. And then when you went home, you had your safe space at home.
Right.
Nowadays, it's 24/7 because of online. Nowadays, some things are happening online that would have never happened in person years ago. So the issue of bullying and cyberbullying in particular have grown exponentially. And I think also contribute to some of the mental wellness issues and school avoidance issues that kids don't want to go to.
Do you see more bullying in, by, to, from boys or against boys or is girls?
I think, I don't think statistically it's changed from what it was back in the day, right?
What was that?
Normally, you know, it's, it's, you have a lot of issues with females on females, right? You know, and they're fighting over the guy or the guy is involved in creating issues. So it's a pretty even mix, I would say, all right? You know, and it's interesting, because as much as things have changed, some of the root causes remain the same back in the day, right? Okay, you're dating my boyfriend, now we're going to have an issue. And I'm going to, you know, call you all sorts of names and everything else. That, that still happens on, on a large degree. But what is different nowadays is kids have to learn the coping skills and get the tools in the toolbox on how to better cope with what they're feeling. So what we hope to do is break those silos down so that there's a true partnership. And Northwell Health has, has gotten involved in some initiatives throughout the island that have helped provide services to school districts. Dr. Jeff Reynolds and his group, same thing. But how do we better create that continuum of care so that there's a warm handoff and schools are truly collaborating as partners as opposed to just individual silos and folks dealing with their stuff? And parents just at a loss bouncing back and forth.
So you're seeing a, you're seeing a bullying problem? You're seeing a drug and alcohol problem among teenagers?
Well, so drug and alcohol has always been an issue in schools, right? And statistically, the numbers really haven't changed. Alcohol is still the primary cannabis. It'll be interesting to see how legalization of cannabis starts to impact our schools, right? Vaping is a big issue in school, obviously, right? So instead of smoking cigarettes, it's vaping. But it's also what they're putting in, in the electronic vaping devices that sometimes is a concern if it's synthetic marijuana, sometimes kids can have very adverse reactions. So you're still seeing predominantly alcohol issues. And ironically enough, the number one substance that's a killer in this country is still alcohol. Most people don't realize that.
I totally agree with you.
But the issues of alcoholism or alcohol abuse, it is still the number one killer. People hear about heroin and opioids all the time. Number one killer in this country, according to the CDC, is still alcohol.
And this is among number one killer among kids or overall?
Just overall nationwide.
Right. I wonder with the, with the children, how that's impacting with, because alcohol now is 21. Is that discouraging, kids getting alcohol, they still?
No, they're still getting it. They're still getting it from mom and dad's stash, older siblings or whatever. You know, some of those issues haven't changed over the years. You're not seeing too many deaths among high school or certainly middle school. But what you see is a pattern of behavior that eventually leads to other bad choices that could really manifest themselves in a very ugly way when they get older. So, but again, if, if you're dealing with a mental illness or a mental wellness issue, right? Let's take the girl that doesn't feel good about herself. She starts self-medicating, if you will, to ease the pain by drinking. And maybe, okay, feels better with alcohol, or maybe, okay, you find something in the medicine cabinet. You know, those are still small percentages, but again, if you don't address it early on, if you don't deal with the mental health issue early on, it'll manifest itself as folks get older and it gets more traumatic, more expensive down the road, and sometimes could lead to tragic situations. So there's a realization among public education. Again, we're there to educate kids on curriculum and everything else, but mental, just like if a kid is hungry, they're not going to learn. If a child's not mentally well, there's going to be problems.
Yeah, how they're supposed to focus.
So we need to take up that issue and partner with the people and the professionals who could do the treatment side of it. We need to identify and work with the issues and the incidents that manifest in, in the schools. We need to be better informed on how to identify a kid that may be struggling. Sometimes the kids, they'll manifest the issues out loud and verbally and very.
Right, this is where they're lashing out.
Sometimes it's very silently, right? So you have some schools that are now teaching their staff mental health first aid for staff to identify red flags, warning issues. You, you have professional staff, I think of Dr. Ron Massara and Senaba Riches. He has staff being trauma-informed. You know, these are things that have always been around in the mental health industry that are now making their way into schools to better help identify a student who may be struggling. And then how do we get them the help that they need? Now, the help that they need is another issue, because the infrastructure that is out there has been decimated over the years because of insurance companies and insurance reimbursement. We could do a whole nother show about that. But the fact is, you have school systems partnering up with mental health providers to better help those students and their families deal with the issues early on. Because the earlier the intervention, the earlier strategies can be employed, the better kids can learn coping skills and know that they could be well and they could be happy. And there's realistic expectations as far as what they should and shouldn't do.
And also avoiding the suppression of those emotions.
Hundred percent.
Just so you're talking about what the Handle With Care, where now if there's some DV in the house, now you're able to cope with it, you, rather than lashing out and expressing your anger in the classroom, you're recognizing, okay, this is about the home, something happened at home, let's talk about it. Let's build on it. And how do we, how do we now grow from that? And be able to express, express your frustrations in a different way, in a safe way. But at the same token, now I'm thinking to myself is, okay, but how much can schools do? You know, there's so, this can't be all the burden on the teacher, right? Because the teacher's still got to teach that subject matter. And I, in my opinion, we, we have, my thought is, everything's going into the school. Like everything is expected the school to handle and everything is expected the school to do. Where now the school's becoming the babysitter, school's becoming the therapist, school's become the security, school's becoming the teacher. At, at what point is the school no longer a school and just basically a one-size-fits-all Costco approach? Where we have everything here and you just send your school, send your, your, your child from 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM and we'll just take care of everything, like I, I feel.
I think we're pretty far down that rabbit hole and I don't know if there's ever a way to get back. But again, I think if, schools aren't trying to do it all, but getting back to why is the cost of education so high? Again, hiring social workers and school psychologists for primary grades and the number of social workers that have been employed by schools since 2016 and, and above increase the cost of education to deal with issues outside of the normal education that we would understand, right? Getting back to some other issues that increase cost too. There's a growing homeless situation on Long Island. And when students become homeless, there's certain federal laws that kick in that protect that student. To give you an example, if you were residing in the ISUP School District and your family becomes displaced for one reason or the other, and you're classified as homeless, you have the option, let's say now you're put into a shelter, you have the option of either attending the school district that is in the area of that shelter or being transported back to your home district. The theory there is keep stability in the kid's life as much as possible. Let them stay with their friends and their teacher that they're familiar with, even though they're living in a different zip code due to circumstances beyond their control. But now the school district is now picking up the cost of transporting the kid from the shelter back to the school and back to the shelter, and that increases cost. But again, it's well-intentioned, right? To try to protect the child who's going through this turbulent time with family circumstances. But that cost is now borne by the school district to deal with an issue that really has nothing to do with math, science, reading, or anything else.
Right. And I think, let's go into that. Let's, let's really break that down. We're looking at $36,105 per student. Okay, the, the classic understanding is your property taxes, two-thirds of it are your school taxes. And that's just going up and up and up. And the question is why? Now, we talked just briefly about with these, with this mental health side of things that we have to attend to and work in tandem with these nonprofit organizations to be able to filter out those in need as well as having on staff, but also at the same time working in tandem with nonprofits to then filter out those needs to each of the respective organizations that'll be able to service and provide treatment for these children, correct? Now, we also have, let's talk about security. Security, 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 that's a big deal. Now, that's all incorporated into this number, is that right?
Absolutely. So 78% of that number goes to salaries and benefits. Because we're a human services industry, so it's people, right? I'm hiring the security guard, I'm paying the security guard's salary, I'm paying into their pension, I'm paying into their.
Salary and benefit of everybody.
Of everybody.
Right, not just teachers, not just administrators, everybody, all the staff, janitors, you name it.
Janitors, secretaries, support staff, teacher aides. You're paying for the cafeteria workers, even if the school subcontract's out with an outside company. You're still paying that outside company to provide the cafeteria services. Same thing with transportation. Transportation is a huge expense for school districts, whether you do it in-house or contract out. Absolutely. And, and transportation costs have gone through the roof. I mean, just look at the increase in fuel.
Yes, that alone, that's a variable cost.
Right? And oh, by the way, electric buses are supposedly coming along. So, you know, you think transportation's expensive now, wait until that starts to kick in.
Will you have to do that? Will you have to do like?
New York State passed a law that says, starting in 2027, any new bus purchased has to be zero emission. And by 2035, all the buses have to be zero emission. A typical bus right now, diesel-fueled powered bus is about $140,000. An electric bus at today's cost is over $400,000. Who's going to pick up that tab? The state of New York has unfunded and underfunded mandates at an alarming rate. You spend some time in the assembly.
Yeah, I remember.
Every time the state of New York passes a law with regards to something with schools.
Who's going to pay for it?
They don't pass along funding to carry out that law. I'm going to give you one small example. Several years ago, I'm going to say probably 2006. New York State passed a law that said, all state employees are entitled to a free cancer screening and they will not be charged their benefit time. That's great. If I'm working for the state, I go for a prostate exam, I get four hours to be able to do that. I don't have to take a sick day, a vacation day, I'm still going to get paid for the day. Now, I'm a state worker in a state office building. I leave my desk, I go get my prostate exam, I'm healthy. The intention is well-intentioned, you want people screening for cancer early to avoid the long-term and the expensive health costs down the road. That's great. But let's put that in a school setting.
Yes.
A teacher now has to leave the building for their free cancer screening. Bob Vecchio goes and gets out his prostate exam and I fill out the paperwork. The school's now going to pay me to go and do that. But now they also have to pay for a substitute to cover my classes.
Because someone's got to be there for the kids.
Somebody's got to be there for the kids. So that cost of that mandate is hugely expensive for school districts that doesn't impact other municipalities the same way.
Were you able to quantify that of what it translates to?
It's millions of dollars every year statewide. There's 740-plus school districts, think about it. Every time a teacher's out, it's probably a $200 charge for a substitute to cover a day, right? So, you know, you have something as small as that, and I call it death by a thousand cuts. Unfunded mandate, unfunded mandate. When I was on the school board in William Floyd, when I first got elected in 2003, 67 cents of every dollar was covered by state aid. When I left the school board in 2021, it was down to 47 cents of every dollar was covered by state aid. Schools only get their revenue from three sources, the federal government, the state government, local property taxes. So the state has systematically shifted the cost of education from them paying the bill, and that's just one small district's example, them paying the bill, to the local property taxpayers paying the bill.
Meanwhile, the school, the, the state costs have increased nevertheless. That's very interesting. We went from just several years ago, I think in 2015, the state budget was 150 billion. We're now 229 billion. So that's very interesting to hear how they shifted that cost, yet. So that's very interesting to hear how they shifted that cost, yet the costs of state government have still increased.
Kinda scary. Now, let's talk about Long Island as a region, right? So let's get into that thirty six thousand dollar. The one thing that Newsday did not cover in that article that was a little disappointing was, it does not account for regional cost differences. All right, Bob, what does that mean? It is more expensive to do business on Long Island than other regions of the state. Everybody knows that. Electric costs are higher, real estate costs are higher, building costs, operational costs, food costs. Everything is higher to do business on Long Island.
Okay.
So we put out, uh, the, the Long Island Education Coalition, which the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association co-chairs, puts out every two years what we call a cost and outcomes report. And we do exactly what Newsday asked. Are we getting a good return on our investment? How are we performing? How do we break down the cost?
Yes.
So the state average of spending a thousand dollars statewide, so if you go up to Mohawk Valley, let's say, and spend a thousand dollars on Long Island, that's the equivalent of spending seven hundred and forty two dollars. We're not getting the same buying power down here on Long Island. So if you were to adjust the per pupil expenditure for the regional cost difference, and there's an actual calculation on how to do that, and this is not something that we create. You know, regional cost is something that's put out by an independent body, it's like a one point four figure for the Long Island region. If you adjust for regional cost differences, we are at or just above what state average for per pupil expenditures are. And that includes salaries and benefits and everything else. So the cost of Long Island's education, when taking into account regional cost, because my dollar doesn't buy the same amount that the dollar up north buys, we're about at the state average. It's still expensive to educate students in New York for a variety of reasons, mandates, laws and regulations that drive up the cost. A WICS law that's on the books, so that construction costs all the time are extremely high. You go to negotiate contracts, there's a Tri-Borough Amendment, uh, out there that, you know, gives a strong advantage to the labor side for a variety of reasons that also indirectly increase costs. But Long Island, when adjusted for regional costs, is at or above the state average. Academically, we perform very well.
How does it compare again with those costs with regional, with the city, in the sense of?
City is similar to ours, right? So from an economic standpoint, we are very, very similar with the regional costs. So New York City, their regional cost is a little bit higher than Long Island, but we're not that far behind, so they have the same issue. But they also get a, a different revenue stream when it comes to funding public education too, right? Because their property taxes are nowhere near what it is on Long Island.
Right.
Because part of the city, uh, budget covers their school system, right? So the income taxes that the city collects, the sales taxes goes into their general fund and they kind of fund education through a different mechanism than it's funded in the suburb.
But they also get funding from the state.
They also get funding from the state.
On top of that.
A lot of funding.
And that's all I wanted to ask you about, is what's the, is there parity between how much the state allocates to the city versus how much the state allocates to Long Island?
I'm glad you said parity, so really easy, because, you know, statistics, you could get boiled down to statistics. Long Island has thirteen percent of the students statewide, all right? Um, and seventeen percent of the students, sorry, we have seventeen percent of the students, we get thirteen percent of the state aid.
There you go.
So we are sending more to Albany than we get back. You said it, sixty eight percent of property taxes covers school taxes on average on Long Island.
Right.
Statewide, it's forty eight percent, because statewide, the state pays more of the tab than the local property taxpayers. So there is a greater effort that is put forward by Long Island schools to support public education. We send more tax revenue and dollars up to Albany than we, what we get back. So lots of times you're gonna hear school advocates on Long Island, we want Long Island to get their fair share, and that's what they're talking about, you know? Now, you can't do a one for one, we have seventeen percent of the students, so we expect seventeen percent of the aid. But when you look at the maintenance of effort, that's school district, uh, school communities on Long Island are paying close to sixty eight percent on average from property taxes directly out of their pocket compared to forty eight percent statewide, there should be some equitable adjustments there, because we're putting forward a greater effort. Should it be, you know, one to one across the board? No, because there's communities in North Country of, of the state of New York where rural poverty is a big, big issue and.
I get that.
And, and you do need to help out those that can't help themselves. But more of the burden is, is born here on Long Island than elsewhere.
What about the city with how much their, how, how many students they have percentage wise of the state, and then how much they're getting in funding?
They're, they're probably, I, I don't have that number, so, but they're, they're definitely a little bit higher as far as student enrollment, you know, Long Island has about four hundred and twenty thousand students, so I know they're, they're higher than that. But they get a lion's share of the state aid.
Lion's share.
It, it, it is closer to, you know, uh, they get a lot more money on a per capita basis.
Right.
Uh, than Long Island does.
And then, then, that's what I'm saying, notwithstanding, it's some, and some of those mandates, they don't have to deal with per se that we do because it's a suburban community, which is very interesting enough, whether it be with transportation costs, whether it be with, uh, sheltering with those who are homeless, it's very different in those respects. And then on top of it, we also have more of appeal of Long Island to keep our students safe, to making sure we have the proper necessary security measures. So we're gonna make sure to, uh, focus or invest in those costs to make sure that the students have the best security possible, so that situations like Nashville, for example, don't happen where someone can just pop in a lock, a, a quote unquote locked door and then come in and shoot up the school. I mean, those are big issues that I didn't, I don't think really people taking consideration. And I, I like how you formulate, you, you presented it as a death by a thousand cuts. It's not just a singular issue, so many people I think want that, where it's like, oh, this is the steak issue, right? You remove the steak and you have the rest of the plate where you're fine.
Here's the magic pill that solves everything.
Exactly, and it's never that, it's gonna be about, so you're looking at the mental health, you're looking at transportation, you're looking at security, you're looking at, uh.
Poverty.
Poverty, food.
Special needs students.
Special needs, and has, how has that in, in, increased?
Increased dramatically, right, um, so.
Why is that?
Well, I, I think because there's additional classifications that we know about today that probably weren't recognized or dealt with properly in the years past. You know, I mean, ADHD, and, and again, you could get back to the use of electronic devices and constant stimuli, you know, kids are just like off the walls because it's stimulus in their face.
TikTok issue.
Now, I'm not trying to diagnose or, or say that's the issue, but there has certainly been an increase in students classified for special needs in schools. So when you increase the mental wellness issues, when you increase the poverty issues on Long Island, our demographics have changed, we have more English language learners as students on Long Island than we did ten years ago. Uh, we're the second highest region in the state excluding New York State City. We're the second highest region in New York State for ELL students as they classify and call them. And that comes with, you know, challenges and additional costs, because there's different intervention strategies you have to do.
I recall a number of years ago, about seven, eight years ago, where we had an issue with the unoccupied, unoccupied, unaccompanied minors, excuse me, unaccompanied minors. Where now they're here and these are children that are now thrown into the schools or, from all different areas that have no idea how to speak English. And then yet you're expected as schools to just.
To make them competent in a couple of years and have them take a region's exam.
Right, makes sense, totally, that's why I think so.
And listen, we're not gonna get into the politics of that issue.
We don't need to.
When the kids show up at the doors of the schools, we're legally obligated to instruct them.
And that's the point.
I'll, I'll leave the.
Leave the politics out of it, that's the stuff I'll take care of.
That's, that's right.
But the point for you is that.
They show up to our doors, we have a legal responsibility.
But those are additional costs, those are more costs now you have to adjust to.
Have to hire the bilingual teacher, right? I have to have the additional social worker maybe to interact with a family that doesn't speak English at all. All of that, all of that stuff.
And the.
Increases the cost of education. And when the unaccompanied minor situation happened, we were down in DC trying to advocate saying, hey, look, you're putting them on our doorstep, you have to give us funding.
Give us the money.
It never happened.
Isn't that amazing?
And it's still not happening.
Pay us, you're the, you're the one that's mandating doing this and you're having, you, this is the, this is the collateral damage unfortunately, where these poor children that are getting thrown in for, for, I'm gonna say, poor government policies that don't fully understand and, or, or really think through, uh, the entire process. And I think it's, it's incredible how you have to adjust to that and be able in, in a year, right? These are throwing in where just, now, now we have to do this, like, these are children just showing up, and same thing happening now with the migrant. Children showing up and over in the city that they're saying, okay, now you have to go teach this. It's, it's a, these all are additional costs that now schools incur.
So talking about another unfunded mandate, after the first situation with the unaccompanied minors uh, situation happened under the Obama administration, some schools were struggling with admitting kids, I know the Hempstead Schools District all of a sudden had a thousand additional kids show up on their doorstep.
Crazy.
The state said, hey, you didn't, you know, you didn't do the right thing and we need to address this and these kids need these services, so the state education department put in a new regulation, wasn't even a legislative law, it was a new regulation from SED called Part One Fifty Four to deal with ENL students that just arrived at your schools. That regulation in my home district cost my local taxpayers two million dollars a year, that's two percent on our tax rate. That's one school district out of seven hundred and forty with one passed regulation by the state education department to deal with it, a legitimate issue, but again.
Gotta provide money.
Here's what you need to do, we're prescribing how you do it, and the cost associated with that, well, that is your problem. And, oh, by the way, there's, you talk to the professionals in the field, there's a better way to address and educate the kids than as prescribed with Part One Fifty Four. So we've been seeking relief from that mandate to no avail for several years. But I, I think the conversation is ongoing, because I think the time is right to talk about that again. Because again, if you provide the mandate relief, now you've provided the financial relief. You know, it, it's great when you're a legislator or a senator up, upstate and, you know, you wanna pass something. I was just at a conference this weekend and the Assembly Chair, Assemblyman Benedetto from.
Yeah, Mike.
Mike.
Yep.
You know, he's like, hey, you know, we, we approved Asian Lunar New Year as a new school holiday.
Correct.
Not a statewide holiday, just a school holiday. So we said to him, Assemblyman, you have just opened up Pandora's Box. We have a certain amount of time to have educational days from September to June. You have now recognized this one holiday.
Get ready for everybody else.
Get ready for everybody else, and are you gonna allow us to start earlier or end later? Oh, no, and oh, the cost associated, you know, because there's soft costs associated with that mandate. So now, you know, I could foresee, and there's some school districts on Long Island that are already doing this, they don't have a winter break, right? Because not every school district in New York State has a winter break like Long Island does. That was created in the nineteen seventies because of the oil crisis, they wanted to close down for a week to save on oil costs.
Very interesting.
Winter break was born, by the way, and then it just has been preserved ever since, I mean, crazy history, right? But now you've just opened up Pandora's Box, because you wanted a piece of legislation that was accommodating a special interest group that was lobbying you, right, wrong or indifferent, it doesn't matter. It, it's like this, your kids come to you and say, here's everything I want for Christmas.
Yeah.
As a parent, you wanna give them everything that they want, but you know you're gonna be paying the bill in January.
Yep.
You know you're gonna still have to put food on the table, so you weigh out your priorities. There's wants and needs.
Cost benefit.
All right, there's wants and needs, and the state has to do a better job of saying what is needed compared to what is wanted and what is nice. What do we need to do? And they need to rely more on the field directly than passing down mandates from a high because they have a specific special interest group that is lobbying hard for what they want. And I say this all the time, if you wanna pass it as a mandate, pass the funding along.
Correct.
When I, as a locally elected board member, say, you know what, we wanna bring in this AP program, or we want our school to be an international baccalaureate program, and we know that there's gonna be a cost associated with that, I'm making that conscious decision to increase my budget to bring in those electives that will benefit my kids, and then it's my job to go and sell it to my community every time we go out for approval in the budget in May. But that's a decision that I have control over.
Yep.
That's a decision that I sit there and say, okay, what is the cost of that? What is the benefit of that? And that's something I have control over. Some of these mandates that come out of Albany, we have zero control over. Some school districts got a three percent increase in aid last year.
Okay.
Three percent. What was the rate of inflation last year?
Six, seven percent?
About seven percent.
Yeah.
Some of the cost of inflation specific to schools, health insurance premiums through NISHIP, New York State Health Insurance Plan, was thirteen percent. Cost of paper, right? If you went to Staples and tried to get a, a rema, paper is increased, so it was closer to nine percent in some cases. So they got three percent in new money from the state, they got nine percent increases in costs, let's say, or let's say six percent.
Yeah.
Where are we making up the other three percent? You're either cutting programs, reducing programs. And, oh, by the way, you have the tax cap in place, so you could only go out with two percent, which really isn't two percent, it's a formula. But, so now, I've got three percent, I've got two percent, let's say, just for argument's sake, for math, that's five percent. And if inflation is two, seven, what do I do to make up that two percent? I have to reduce somewhere.
Reduce somewhere or increase taxes?
Well, you.
Oh, you can't, you can't, yeah.
Well, you can, but nobody really rarely has success piercing the cap, right? If you're gonna pierce the cap, that's, but you're starting to see more school districts that you wouldn't expect trying to pierce the cap over the last several years because they're trying to close that gap without reducing the quality of the programs that they're offering.
And let me just also speak about, you, you brought up about earlier, seventy eight percent of the cost per student is based on salary. Viewers and listeners are wondering, why can't you just lower that?
So lower salaries, who's gonna start first, number one, that's the reality of it, right? That's not a good answer, but that's gonna be the reality of it. But again, keep in mind, when you affect, when you impact the regional cost differences for the salaries, our teachers are at the statewide average. And, you know, it's, it's like anything else, if you want a high quality educator in your classroom.
Correct.
You're gonna pay for that.
Yep.
Right? If you wanna attract the best and the brightest, now, listen, the school district that I was in, William Floyd, was considered a high need school district, very socioeconomically challenged, we had a lot of poverty in our district, we didn't have a lot of wealth. And we had a hard time recruiting staff because our pay scale was not competitive with SACHAM, let's say.
Yes.
So if you're a teacher fresh out of school and SACHAM is gonna offer, offer you sixty five thousand to start and William Floyd's gonna offer you fifty two thousand to start.
Where are you gonna go?
Where are you gonna go?
Of course.
Right? So it's a competitive market, just like any other capital marketplace, but within region.
And, and also I think it's relevant just to include about, you brought up the Tri-Borough Amendment, not many people know what that is. And that was also very relevant for in terms of negotiations.
Right.
For you. Now, the Tri-Borough Amendment continues the contract even though it's expired.
Right.
So therefore, as a school board with negotiations for future contracts, where's your leverage?
Sometimes there is no leverage, right?
And I just think it's important for viewers and listeners to understand that.
Right.
Now, whether it's good or bad, nevertheless, when you negotiate the new contract, that makes it very difficult when there is no equilibrium or, or arms length position of, of conversation.
Right.
And that's what makes it for those listening, that's what makes it very difficult when the school boards have to then renegotiate. Well, if I don't, why would I, as a, as, as one labor union, why would I negotiate for any, anything less? Because if I, if I just don't do anything, it's still continued status quo.
Right, during the gap elimination adjustment years, during the Great Recession.
Yes.
School districts lost hundreds of millions of dollars in school aid. I was on the board at the time, we lost twenty million dollars in two years. We reduced a hundred and fifty teachers, we reduced programs, we reduced sports offerings, we reduced everything. The Tri-Borough Amendment, if the contract came up during that period of time, from a labor standpoint, why am I gonna go negotiate during a really tough economic time where they're gonna be looking for concessions where?
I'll just wait.
I'll keep it status quo and portions of our contract are still gonna give increases to our employee, our labor union members because of step salary increases, right? So maybe the increase above step is frozen, but I'm not reducing my benefits. I'm still getting step increases, right, which could average two or three percent, and I'll just wait it out until times are settled. And that is the problem with the Tri-Borough Amendment on, on the backend, that during tough economic times, it's tough for a board management side of the school district to bring labor to the table.
Right.
And to negotiate a new contract when they have every incentive to wait it out.
Now, on the flip side, there's also the administrators, and a lot of people complain about that with the superintendent, deputy superintendent, deputy deputy superintendent, deputy 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 superintendent, things of that nature.
Folks to go and look at the administrator ratio per student, it's not as high as everybody thinks.
Okay.
So when we start to talk about consolidation of schools, right, you have way too many administrators.
That's the conversation.
That's the conversation. So a school district that has nine thousand employees, I'm using my home district as an example, nine thousand students, about fifteen hundred staff members, quarter of a billion dollar budget. We have a superintendent who's in charge of, he's your CEO. We have an assistant superintendent for secondary, so that's, you know, seven through twelve. We have an assistant superintendent in charge of K through five.
Yep.
We have a, a, a director in charge of special ed, and you have an assistant superintendent for human resources, right? And you have an assistant superintendent for business, so you have your CFO, your CEO, and the heads of all those departments.
Correct.
That's not overly staffed, right? And if you were to try to consolidate school districts, and, and I use this as an example all the time, well, there's only one New York City school system. Do you know how many superintendents there are in the city of New York? There's a, tons of them.
There's.
And listen.
People don't realize that.
How do you manage a system that large without people to manage it, right?
Absolutely.
So when you look at the superintendents and you talk consolidation, yeah, you may be able to reduce some of the administrative backend costs if you had one system in Suffolk County and one system in Nassau, some of the administrative costs. But here's what they don't tell you. I just explained to you earlier how my salary scales less than SACHAM. You're gonna level up the salaries for all the staff? So whatever savings you think you're gonna get on the administrative end, it's gonna cost you way more, because how do you address that equity? You think SACHAM's gonna agree to lower their salary to the low? No. It's gonna be a leveling up, it's gonna cost you more money, and that's why.
And you're creating a one size fits all approach, rather than a customized.
And, oh, by the way, you're no longer gonna find that board member outside of mass or in the supermarket to say, hey, I have a problem. Now it's a county wide system.
Now, it's coming, now, to me, I, I wanna stay away.
Granular level.
Exactly. And that's the whole appeal of Long Island is that organic granular, community based
Right.
style of schooling. And I think that, that is, is the appeal that people love. And that's why they flee New York City to come to Long Island because they love these certain school district areas, these certain communities to live in, these certain locations for, uh, business growth that still I have these awesome school districts right by that allows my children to thrive.
And as you can tell, Mike, I'm a huge fan of locally elected boards of education and local governance, local control. Because it was a passion of mine for 18 years.
I love it.
And I get to help support boards across Long Island to do their thing. And you know, now that the state you recently heard, we have fully funded the foundation aid form.
Yeah, I want to wrap up with this. That's exactly what I wanted to finish with because we're talking so much about state aid, state aid, state aid. Where is the future of state aid funding as we wrap up? Because I want to focus as how we're saying they're giving us unfunded mandates. The state is making this one rule that inc- incurs $2 million, some one, two, 2% increase on your, just to one school district's budget. It's incredible. So where are we? And I was supposed to ask about parity. So where are we on this future state aid funding? Where are we going in 2024?
Right. So a lot of schools, several school districts got a lot of state aid last year. And I'll use William Floyd as an example again. They got a huge amount of state aid because they were owed it based on the formula. They were supposed to get those funds 15 years ago.
Wasn't a lot of that also from federal monies?
No, well, some of the COVID money helped increase, but what I'm talking about with state aid in particular. State aid finally, finally funded the state aid formula of to what they were supposed to fund education for.
Oh, just as foundation. You're talking about the foundation aid?
Foundation aid.
Yes.
Right? And the foundation aid formula came about because the city of New York sued the state of New York saying, you're not funding education.
There we go.
Based on your constitutional obligation of providing a sound, basic, free education. And they put a price tag on it. The courts put a price tag on it back in 2004. So since that ruling in 2004, 2005, the state only now is funding it at the level of their constitutional obligation.
19 years later.
And oh, by the way, the formula is 20 years old.
Right.
So some of the data points are two decades old. They're, they're still behind the times. So they finally paid what they were supposed to pay 15, 16 years ago, if we're going to be conservative today. But today's dollar and the cost of increase, mental, mental illness and mental wellness, a classification for the cost of that was not calculated into the formula.
Right, all these extra collateral issues.
Wasn't the issue back then that it is today. So where are we at? Where do we need to go? So obviously everybody says the foundation aid formula, which drives the state aid to schools. Okay?
And that's that basic, right? That's that basic number, hence the name foundation aid. That's the foundation to build on.
Very complicated formula. It is like.
Which I don't understand why.
Five different moving parts. I think there's three people in the state that understand the formula in full and I am not one of them.
Right.
But we need to reform the formula. We need to update the data. They're still using census data from 2000. But the big thing for us and the, the thing that we're laser focused on as an advocacy point, as an association and as a region, is how they recognize poverty. And I, and you've heard me say this, that demographics on Long Island have changed. Poverty has changed on Long Island. They are still using federal poverty measures, right?
Okay.
Which says family of four, 30 grand.
Yeah. 30 some thousand.
Guess what? 30 grand or less. You're beyond poverty on Long Island. So the United Way put out a figure called the ALICE measure and it stands for asset limited income constrained and employed. Basically you're working, what does it take for a survival budget on Long Island? What does it take to rent or have some form of housing, food, gas and, and other things?
Right.
Basic survival budget. And the United Way puts this out and it's called the ALICE measure. And it says for Nassau and Suffolk County, and we're going to blend the two, they have this, a figure specific for Suffolk, a figure specific for Nassau because Nassau is a little more expensive than Long, uh, Suffolk County. But it's about $78,000 for a family of four.
78.
So if you're, you're 78 and above, you're above the ALICE measure, you're not living in poverty. If you're 78 or below, you're living in what United Way, under the ALICE measure, would consider poverty. That is a better.
For a family of four.
For a family of four. That is a better, better measure of poverty because remember the thing that we said about regional cost difference?
Yes.
The ALICE measure takes into account for regional cost difference.
As it should.
Rent in Nassau County is a lot more money than rent in Albany County.
Yes.
Right? So the ALICE measure takes that into account. So one of the main advocacy points that if I want to leave your listeners with here today and they talk to their state legislators, say, look, you need to incorporate the ALICE measure into the formula and how you fund schools. Because that's fair for everybody regardless of the region, but what it'll do, it is, it'll expand what is considered poverty areas for schools, which will drive more state aid to those schools because they understand when you have a socioeconomically challenged family, to educate that child on average costs you more money than somebody that's not and has more resources. Common sense.
Yes, that's true.
So we are laser focused to say, look, when you reform the formula and you got to do it soon, the ALICE measure should be the measure for poverty as an indicator because demographics have changed all over this state. And you need to also recognize the mental wellness challenges. There needs to be some sort of waiting for students that are identified that way, just like they do awaiting for an ENL student, awaiting for a special ed student. And you need to recognize those two things that will benefit on a fairly based level. Every school district, regardless of zip code, if you have more special ed students or you have more students that are identified with mental wellness, it doesn't matter whether you're a rich community, a poor community, we're going to drive more dollars for you to help deal with that student. Because listen, at the end of the day, schools have got to be successful by what I call the three Es. If at the end of the day, when the kids cross our stage in June and we're handing out the diplomas and that is the best time for a board member, that's our, you know, people say it's a thankless job. That I get plenty, I got to hand my kids their diplomas.
That's awesome.
I am more than paid in full for my service. Thank you very much because I got that unique opportunity. But I also got the opportunity for 18 years, watching so many kids that I got to know across the stage. But we have to do this in order to be successful and schools on Long Island have done this pretty well and are growing on this. We have to have our students ready for what I call the three Es. When you graduate with a diploma from a school on Long Island, you are ready for enrollment in higher ed or you're ready to be employed in the trades. Advanced manufacturing here on Long Island is huge. We're, you know, we're in the month of October celebrating manufacturing month and, and manufacturing day on Long Island is coming, right? Employed in the trades or an entrepreneur or eligible to enlist in the military. Most, most folks are not even eligible to enlist in the military. More than 70% of today's high school students couldn't enlist into the military if they wanted to. Of the remaining 30%, less than 1% enlist. And, and less than 1% of this country serve our nation in uniform. So it's a very special thing. So I always include enlistment. So if we can have our students ready for one of those or a combination of those three things, then we've done our job as a public school system because they are ready for the next step beyond our doors. And for the most part, overwhelmingly, Long Island schools are doing that very well. So the return on investment, which was the question that Newsday posed, the return on investment is yes, it's, we have a strong return on our investment. Can it be better? Can there be a better way to, to structure the cost and the expense of education? Yes. But we need assistance from the state to do that. Because local boards of education have been doing it pretty well for a long time. As a matter of fact, I have a figure here, just let me find it. Over the last 10 years, and this was going up to 2021, the budgets on Long Island for schools have increased by 3.2% per year over the last 10 years. It's not a lot.
No.
State average, by the way, increased 3.62%. So Long Island schools have been containing costs better than the state average. And when people hear that number, wow, that doesn't sound like a big cost increase.
No, it isn't.
But it's still increasing cost and we went through why. So I'm really proud of our school systems on Long Island. We do a really darn good job. We can do better.
And I think, Bob, that's exactly it, is that the people agree with you. Everyone is proud of Long Island school system. And that's exactly it is, how can we do better? And the why was most important, which we really ironed out today on this episode, which was excellent to be informative for our viewers and guests to be, to realize where these costs are born out of, how well our school boards are managing over the past decade. And I think it's admirable in the sense of recognizing how elections have consequences outside where other policies, although they don't on its face have any effect to a school board or school district, they do. And I think that's more important for people to recognize that is how is this going to affect these other costs? That maybe directly are not obvious, but tangentially will be, uh, shown. And I think this has been great. I admire your vigor, Bob. I love your passion. I love your commitment. And most importantly, I want to thank you for all your dedication for the years that you had for your school district. And frankly, to Nassau and Suffolk County for being there to be the voice of reason, the voice of advocacy for Long Islanders. So I appreciate that immensely.
We have 420,000 reasons why we have to get it right. And that's all those kids that show up to our doors with dreams and aspirations. We have to do the right thing, the right way for every one of them.
Bob Vecchio, Executive Director, Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.